Before I turn it over to the distinguished council president, I will ask our county manager briefly tell us the current calls from here.
Yes, feel free to send any chats to me on the system. You should be able to chat with me as a host of the meeting. This is our second hybrid meeting, so again, just thank you for bearing with us. We're going to try to enunciate and be as clear as possible. Moving forward, we'll have some microphones, as the mayor was just saying, so hopefully that should continue to improve as well. If for some reason we get interrupted and are unable to continue on the business of the meeting, we will end the meeting. I'll send out new instructions to rejoin so that we can complete the business that's on the agenda. And I just ask that folks turn off their video cameras unless they're making a public comment. And also just a reminder on the procedure for adopting any changes to the town code. That the council discusses it at these work sessions and may decide to move it forward for introduction at a town meeting. Any changes to the town code, any policy is also subject to a public hearing. So at that point, residents will have an opportunity to weigh in. With that, I'll turn it over to the county council president.
In fact, there's also a time period between the announcement and the vote.
That's right, yes.
For changes and deliberations. Thank you very much. Apologies for being late. In person. Okay, we have a lot of topics to discuss, so let's just dig right in. First topic is discussion of current amendments. As far as to the stormwater negotiations and some related current items. And I know if we wanted, Matt, you could give a brief summary or for Ron to provide it. And I thought that they could hear and ask some questions in particular.
Yeah, I can just briefly just remind folks that we sort of considered it at a previous meeting, but felt like maybe it needed some more fine tuning before it was introduced. There's a number of changes in here, some of which are formalizing our standard procedure, such as requiring a wall check for building permits, allowing us to do a hearing for various issues in particular before a county permit is obtained. And then there's some more substantive changes as well, such as the, for lack of a better word, tiering system for the stormwater management devices, requirement for stormwater management, stormwater storage for additions, as opposed to just new construction as it currently is. And I don't know if there's anything else wrong that you think is especially worth pointing out.
Just, I would add to that, following up on prior discussions, the biggest change perhaps is removal of the prior reference to conservation landscaping and the replacement with environmental site design. And council member Barr has previously explained why that's an important change and may have some more information tonight as to whether further editing is necessary based on committee comments and concerns.
Before we go around to discussing, one mention. Ron had mentioned at one of our last meetings that the environment committee and stormwater management committee have additional or further ideas that could be written into the code amendments. My preference is to proceed with what we have here. I believe Ron supports that. And then we can gain lessons learned and what we've adopted in the past and what we were considering adopting, then we can make additional changes in the future, as opposed to continuing to wait and discuss additional tweaks and modifications, not making any changes, I'd rather move ahead if possible. So with that as well, we did, Ron, do you have any additional?
Right, I agree. I mean, we had a further email from two members of the stormwater committee with their suggested changes. And the only one that I think we showed it up now because it actually will help our current thing is to add in the renovation language that when they come up with their stormwater design, they should use the same tiering scheme that new structures are using. They just refer to the, there is section A 481 in that segment. It's about a three-word change to the code at that point. It's all what's required, maybe five words. That basically makes renovations under the same standard then as new construction. That's it, that's the only thing we should adopt. The other ones they're talking about, which are things like place down to about eight feet from the edge of your property and make sure that there's spreading of water from there so as to avoid channeling. Now, that needs some further discussion because a neighbor will have eight feet from their property place. So we need to think about that further and then push the cycles out. We'll bring it up later.
So that is not in this?
That's not in this, no. I did have one comment for Ron, and I do want to make sure that it's clear. I may have just read it, but Ron, you suggest deleting E and F from the criteria for permit decisions. And E particularly is the one where the neighbors get the word in. That's the one that current that was, whether the proposed word on duty and adverse effects that houses may be adjoining or confronting property owners of residence or the enjoyment of their property. And you're saying, take that out. You also take out F, which is the town's higher level of concern. As I read that down, the neighbors have no say at all, no chance to comment on the approval of a home, other than in the various. Is that true?
Generally, yes, and that's standard practice. The say that a neighbor would have, however, would relate to whether or not permit criteria has been satisfied. Has, you know, the county or the town properly applied the criteria in granting or denying a permit? So for example, at the county level, if a neighbor believes the county hasn't properly interpreted its height requirement, neighbor can appeal the issuance of the building permit to the county board of appeals. But typically, again, the standard practice is the initial question of whether or not a permit is granted is based on substantive code criteria for which the town has authority to impose pursuant to the land use article of the Maryland code, section 2509, which provides an enumerated list of things that the town is allowed to regulate with respect to building requirements, including height, lot coverage setbacks, massing, design, and impervious surface coverage, including lot coverage. But questions like, does it adversely affect one's enjoyment? You know, is, as we've discussed before, potentially problematic because it's subjective and not tied to any criteria for which the town has express authority under that section.
Okay, so, Mr. Attorney, and for the benefit of, in particular, the newer council members. So this is probably one of the most controversial provisions of our building. And because, and when we reviewed the code, which is one like five or six years ago now, this is one of the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but I think this is one of the places where we put an asterisk, we discussed later, because we've been hunting it forward and forward all these years. Now, so what we really need to do to, so we can, to give serious consideration is, let's talk about the origins of that language. I think that language was written, do we know what year that language was added to the town?
Oh, I don't know that, Mr. Mayor.
Right, well, I think, I think before we think about changing it or leaving it there, I think we need to get information, because I would suspect that it was written at a time that code, the code was changed without any legal review, because it seems to me that that is, that language isn't really legal. And I would suspect that it wasn't reviewed and it wasn't based on best practices in other municipalities. I mean, do any of your other municipalities, do you represent, have such language in their building code application?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor. With respect to public health, safety, and welfare, that typically comes up with respect to conditions that can be imposed on a permit. For example, in granting a permit, if the town has a concern about public health, safety, and welfare, the permit can be conditioned to alleviate that concern with respect to, you know, location of equipment, obstruction of the sidewalk with building materials, and so on and so forth. But, you know, if a proposed construction project complies with substantive criteria, enjoyment is not considered by my other clients that do this type of building permit.
Right, yeah, enjoyment, actually, I just read a book published this year on applications of the nuisance laws, and enjoyment has a very long legal history, going back four hundred years, if you probably don't. But it is, I agree, a very difficult concept to, for us to come up with judgment on. But there are other concepts, I mean, we can say interfere with the use of their property, and usage is very much more concrete. They go to demonstrate what is it that is impaired in their use of their property if you're using for use. So there are steps that we can put where it can be more concrete. And if it allows the neighbors then to speak, we can remove enjoyment.
I mean, I think we can all agree that that provision is too vague, right? So, but we need, but we need to find language that is functional, that is used in other places, that does work and addresses those excellent points that you just raised. So, don't you, do you all agree with me? I mean, you all know what I'm saying, but you can understand why certain residents want us to keep it, because it throws it, it throws the bird on the council to each time trying to decide what is, you know, what does this mean and get reinterpreted each time.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, for some more historical context, because the town is within what's known as the regional district, the town does not have zoning authority. As suburbs started to become developed around DC, the Maryland legislature recognized there ought to be some entity overseeing all this development to make sure public facilities were adequately planned, streets were adequately connecting, et cetera. And so park and planning was created, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, and given exclusive authority for land use and zoning and subdivision, you know, determining how land can be used. At that time, some municipalities were imposing setbacks. And in 1991, Chevy Chase View was brought to court for attempting to impose a setback. As I recall, someone was disallowed the ability to build a deck because it would have encroached into the setback, and that person challenged in court and won. The court found that that setback was impermissible because it was in the nature of zoning. That surprised a lot of municipalities in the area, and a legislative remedy was sought, and an exception was carved out of that law to allow municipalities to impose setbacks, because a lot of them were already doing so. And then it was expanded in 2006, when communities were experiencing what's been referred to as mansionization. And the legislature recognized that, you know, the county's one-size-fits-all regulations weren't appropriate for some municipalities in order for them to protect the characters of their neighborhood and to address, you know, neighbor concerns about large structures being possibly built next to them that would loom over them. So in addition to setbacks, the municipalities were granted authority to address all sorts of things that, you know, frankly, do protect the neighbor, the neighbor's enjoyment. So, you know, I would suggest that the appropriate way, or a appropriate way, to address neighbor's enjoyment is with the specific building regulations that you can impose on how homes are built, height, setbacks, wall plane length, you know, wall plane height, lot coverage, and all those things can preserve a neighbor's enjoyment.
I mean, I, see, I have no problem with having discussions about these increased kind of restrictions. And, but right now, the way the language is, it's so vague, it just makes it so challenging. And this is your opportunity to change that.
Right.
Now you jump in.
To remove it and follow what Ron is saying, which is we just make our code so good that in fact it's going to cover all aspects of the neighbor's enjoyment.
Correct.
Can I, may I?
This is what it comes down to if we're working well.
Thank you, Ron. Just like you go around the virtual and real room to here. What are your thoughts or questions?
Thank you, sorry. I'm sorry about the setup, and it's kind of hard to have a good conversation. So this probably will be the last time I'll be virtual, so look forward to seeing you all in person. I see that the changes that we have proposed here actually fall into three categories, all of the changes. And I appreciate that we've given it, you know, added time for all of us to have a conversation today. One is a set of changes that are encoding lived practice or updating the code based on lived practice of implementing the code. I think Matt enumerated a few of those. I think this particular change around this language seems to be in that category. And my perspective is I'm fully in favor of these proposed changes because they reflect, you know, our lived experience over many years. Not necessarily this specific council, but as a body, we have gone through many cycles of implementing those aspects of the code, and we have seen what has worked and what hasn't. So, and I can quickly go through what I understand those changes are, which is the allowing hearings before county permit, the wall check requirement, this, the E and F on criteria for permit decisions, you know, that we were just discussing, although I might have some granular suggestions there. If you ever, if you would like, I'm happy to share those. Entering stormwater devices into land records, exceptions for driveways, perhaps. So those changes seem to be based on our lived experience. I think then the second bucket is very specific to stormwater. And because these changes are broader than stormwater, right? Like the permit criteria, E and F, that we were just discussing is broader than stormwater. Then there are a second set of changes that are specific to stormwater that might be lower hanging fruit based on our direct one case, which by the way, has not been fully implemented. Construction still hasn't started, I can see that through my window. So if we have one sample size and they haven't started work, but based on our process of deliberating and trying to get that through, we might have some lessons there, and I can see some benefits of acting on those. I'm not 100% clear which of the changes Ron and Matt comport to that criteria that are based on that. And then there's a third criteria, the third set of changes, sorry, that seem to be much more substantive and are the next set of stormwater code changes we are proposing. And so, for example, you know, this environmental site design and the specific language under section four, stormwater drainage, the new, you know, section three around 150 square feet, the specific maintenance requirements, possibly. They're not grounded in any direct lived experience, as far as I know, please correct me, but are kind of the part, the continual part we are on to further strengthen our code on stormwater. I see these three sets of changes. On the first one, because as Jeffrey was describing, they are based on many sort of years of lived experience. I think Matt was also saying that it's easy for me to wrap my mind around and sort of rely on the historic experience, and I'm hoping that we're improving the code as a result of that. I think the second one, I believe there are changes here, but I'm not clear which ones those are, and it'd be good to find out which ones are kind of grounded in our direct experience of getting this first sample case done. The third one, you know, I'm a little fuzzier, because we don't have any direct data. You know, we are, we haven't, we've not even seen a live implementation of our first case. Ideally, I would love to see two or three cases, you know, before we look at the data and then collectively decide what additional measures we need to put in. And so just based on that, I'm less convinced of those pieces. But if we are going to move forward with those pieces, then I do have a set of questions there, which I'm happy to get back to. And I also have a set of suggestions on E and F, the permit criteria that we were just discussing, which I'm happy to get back to.
Thank you for digging into it in detail. I like your approach to here. In terms of discussion, we don't need to come to agreement tonight and resolve all of the ins and outs and come up with a a complete answer. I think we want to try and get our arms around what's being proposed, see if we generally agree that we're ready to introduce it. Things can still be adjusted and modified and will certainly be discussed in great detail in public forums before we actually make any changes.
Right, I think it would be good to delineate these three buckets. The first category, which are, you know, changes we are suggesting that are based on improving the code based on lived experience, like encoding the wall check. I think there are four or five things like that, which I suspect there's general agreement, you know, on our council on that. The second criteria would be good, second bucket would be good to enumerate what those changes are that directly correspond to our lived experience in trying to approve that case where we went back and forth and discussed. I'm a little fuzzy on that, and maybe Robyn has a better picture on that or Ron has a better picture on that. And then the last criteria, which is sort of these new substantive changes, which I think are part of the continuum of changes we wanted, where I think we need more discussion, to be brutally honest, because they could be meaningful. And if, you know, at a bare minimum, because we don't have many cases, if you're going to move forward, it behooves us to discuss them as much as we can.
That's good, we might confuse a Chinese venue approach from the actual introduction considered for voting on.
That's suggesting, yeah.
So for this initial round, Shannon, do you have any questions, comments?
Um, well, I think that, I mean, to me, you know, I think it would be helpful, like, to do kind of like an overarching, like, you know, what's really our goal here? Is our goal to make it really hard for developers to build houses? Is it to protect our neighbors? Is it to, you know, watch out for stormwater management? I mean, you know, what are our goals, like, in terms of our building codes? And so that we can kind of answer some of these questions. The neighborhood enjoyment part of it, or the neighbor enjoyment part of it, you know, part of the challenge is that Montgomery County, you know, we are a tiny blip on Montgomery County's radar. And, you know, that clause, or, you know, whatever that is, allows us to somehow, you know, do something that Montgomery County maybe have already approved, and it gives us a little bit of an out. So if we're like looking down the road, and, you know, we all know stormwater management is an increasingly important issue. And, you know, like we talked about the other time with three 1,000-year storms that have happened in the past summer. So, you know, if we're going to go, I mean, I think that that's a really crucial element to think like five, 10, 15 years down the path from where we are right now and what that looks like. And if Montgomery County doesn't change how they do their stormwater management, then we're going to set up a code that will at least protect us. It's not going to protect us from Drummond or River Road or Willard or, you know, any of those roads that are next to us, but it protects us kind of a little bit more within our community. And so, you know, I don't know if that's, if, you know, if we can make in kind of a clause like that so that we can operate as a town that's a little bit separate from Montgomery County. You know, what happens if zoning laws change and we don't really have a lot of say in the next 10 years? And, you know, someone wants to build fourplexes all over. And, you know, according to Thrive 2050, we don't, as a town, won't have a say on that. Maybe if this kind of, you know, neighbor clause is put in, we can have a little bit more authority if needed. And that's, you know, those are just kind of my thoughts on, you know, why are we, why are we doing this? Why is important? What does it look like in 20 years from now with these houses? And, you know, so to make adequate changes now for looking ahead to the future.
So I think those are excellent point observations and points, Shannon, but we just want to understand the recommendation. It sounds like you're looking more for the town to engage on a state level, to change the state law so that we could protect the town we want to if Thrive 2050 is approved as, is that correct? As opposed to the specifics of this change that we're talking about?
I mean, I think these changes that we talk about, you know, I'm, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say, which I took too long to say in too many words, was, you know, if we take out this enjoyment of the neighbor clause, like, you know, do we have the right to? What happens if, what happens if the, the, someone, we have a height requirement, and someone lives on top of a hill in our neighborhood, and then their house is going to go up and they're not going to, they're not going to exceed the height requirement necessarily, but due to their particular land issue, it might not be a great scenario with the neighbors. Do we have those, I mean, if we take out the neighbor clause, is that, just get rid of that? I mean.
Oh. Well, that's why I was, that's why I was saying that we need to study and find language that is used successfully in other municipalities, that does make clearer what that clause means. Because right now, that clause is vague and creates lots and lots of conflict and challenge for the council to make a decision on an application. But so I don't, so I understand where Shannon's coming from, and I do think that that is what most of, the majority of our residents want. But it's, but as our town attorney has reminded us on many occasions, it's so vague that every time you make a decision based on that, we are opening up ourselves for a court challenge on the case. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, depends on the, the decision that's made.
The the decision that's made, of course. And to answer Councilmember Rovax's question. The way you deal with that type of situation is with the combination of building requirements. In addition to height, you also have setback requirements. That, you know, hopefully address that type of situation and prevent a looming condition. Also, height is usually measured from the lower of the pre and post. Development grade. So someone can't alter the grade of their. Their lot to. You know, play games with height requirements. But then also you you look around and. And adopt, and you look around the town in adopting a height requirement and determine. If there are any. Issues that would be created by your specific height that you've selected. I mean, generally speaking, there are houses on all the the lots now. And you should be able to get. An answer as to whether, you know, adopting a twenty eight or thirty two foot height requirement would enable someone to build something that. Is much taller than the existing structure based on the existing grade.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, our neighborhood. One of the nice things is there's a wide array of different house types and styles. Um, that are here and, you know, a big portion of that are. You know, those mid-century moderns that are one story. Um, and then on the flip side, everyone wants a house that's, you know, includes a basement to a third story. You know, working rooms and attic now. So, um, you know, you can see why. On some of those streets that have that. You know, mostly those those houses that have the flat roofs or whatever you wanna call them, that style. If 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 people, if every other neighbor tears one down and builds a giant one, it's really gonna affect, um, you know, light and air on those streets. So, but then on, you know, on other streets, it's not necessarily the same.
It's a part to.
And some streets have bigger lots and some streets don't, you know, there's, there's a lot of lots that are. Are, you know, five or six thousand, seven thousand square feet and, you know, they feel a lot tighter. Um, you know, when people are building. Houses that, you know, butt up to every, you know, required setback.
Are you suggesting we consider a height restriction?
Um, well, we do have a height restriction, don't we? Oh, we, oh, we follow the Montgomery County height restriction.
Which, to your, to your earlier point, I felt, you know, you were, you were kind of saying that the county, there's a dissonance with the county. And it seems to show up in some places. I think height might be one area. And you definitely have evidence for that. Once again, we have history and experience with it. So there might be some reason to consider a height restriction or at least debate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, a height restriction might be a good thing to look at, to implement. Because, um, you know, as the, uh. The use for houses kind of changes along the ways, I mean. Um. You know, it 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 might be something that we wanna consider.
Yeah, so one idea just popped in my mind, what approach might be to actually. Work with architects. To get their input on how certain change, how it might be able to be written so that. So the compromises could be reached easier. You know?
But I'd like to, I'd like to give Debbie a chance to.
I'm totally confused at this point.
Um, with that very wide range of discussion.
Yeah, I I I, um. One of these things I say is that I am all for tightening this code. To make it as easy to understand as possible, so we are not on the fence here on the line of. That was what to do. I wouldn't know what to do when it comes to our code. And I thought tonight what we're doing is just like discussing these things, number one, and we found really far afield, so a little confused. Um, but if I could just jump in and say, I I liked where Robin was going. On the whole enjoyment, if that word may be used, is the word usage you use, Robert? I think that that was a good way to do it. Enjoyment is, uh, far too. Wide varying and, you know, joy seems much differently. So I'd like to, um, support that. Um, like, one of my questions about, because I read this whole thing. And are we just dealing with stuff you have here, number one?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, Kavir was correct in that there are different kinds of changes here. Um, and the particularly the removing the enjoyment provisions are unrelated to stormwater provisions. Um, we could postpone those changes, uh, while, while we search if there is good language in other jurisdictions. That stuff that fails a function that we're asking for here. Um, while still including any huge stormwater requirements because they are in five seven, right?
I was suggesting the opposite, which is that the first set of, first set of changes, the first cri- bucket of changes. It seems to be based on many years of lived experience, like the vagueness of the enjoyment language. And I appreciate that. And I have myself wondered what that means. So if there is that history and there are a few other things like that, that I think Matt listed at the top of the meeting. Those to me seem like no brainers for us to pursue. That would I, that's what I would propose. What I'm not clear on, Robin, is that second category, which is stormwater changes based on our lived experience. Do we have any such changes? Uh, that that kind of, uh, easy to pick up based on our process that we went through for the Trent Street property. Which I consider still our only test case, correct me if I'm wrong about that. And then lastly, I think we need more discussion to to Debbie's point on the on on the last bucket, which is the substantive stormwater changes. We need, I I I'm frankly, I don't understand all of them and I'm. You know, there there's language that's been added that's very specific. I'm wondering where it's grounded in and is it? Again, I didn't see it connected to our lived experience. So that third piece. As Steve was alluding to, in a, in a sort of menu approach, maybe we come back to. Whereas the first two pieces, if they are indeed based on experience and especially the first piece. On many years of experience, I think, uh, uh, at least I'm in favor of moving forward with them. And I would trust our lawyer to, in terms of Ron's suggestions on language and experience with other towns. You know, I'll put a lot of premium on that.
The issue with the, the change, the first set of changes, which are, is that most of them are non-controversial and simple. And they can go forward as far as I'm concerned, that's true of everybody. But the change on taking E and F out of the permit criteria is the one that we're sensitive to and we're very sensitive to. Come from several different council members. I don't think we're ready just to prove that straightforwardly.
Robin, could you say that again? I'm very sorry. Could you say that again?
Most of the changes that you're talking about in the first category, such as the wall check, um. They're non-controversial and we can improve them straight off. That's easy. One change in that category that is difficult is, um, the E and F.
Got it, got it. Agreed, agreed.
And allow Ron to do some research to see if there is fail-safe language in other jurisdictions. That we can use there, whether it's on use or whatever.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Okay. There are, there are, secondly, there are stormwater cri- criteria. Really, what we're trying to do in this section is simply. Add renovations to our existing standard for new criteria. If we don't do that, every application is gonna come in for a renovation because they avoid our stormwater criteria if they come in for renovation. So we should add language on the renovation so that they don't do that. The third point you made is correct, that is, the maintenance responsibilities are new and we can certainly discuss those in in greater detail. Uh, remember that all these ideas are coming from the Stormwater Committee recommendations. That's, that's their source to us. And that they're collecting through that lived experience all through town members, um, and building the recommendations to us on that.
Yeah, on, on, on the second bucket. Well, it'd be great to hear what other councilmen, Steve and others, think about this this delineation. And what Ron, Robin was suggesting on the first, first bucket.
So what I've heard from council members, I think that for this next update or revision to the town code. We should T E and F in as written. And give ourselves a little more time to research it and it. Um, as part of the town character, to have this as a reference point, even though it's. Incredibly difficult, I believe, for councils to wrestle with on a case-by-case basis and difficult for. Architects and homeowners and neighbors to know what it really means. But it's still a, a reference point and as one more you mentioned, it really. Encourages or facilitates communication and discussion, which is also part of the town character. So. Until we can, until we come up with better language for E and F, I would keep the F the way it is. Um, the stormwater items. I am comfortable proceeding with, perhaps we will proceed with them as, as a separate code amendment. So. We as a group can consider them separately and depending on what you want to support. You might or might not go forward with some of them in in this next round. I just have to, there's a question of experience. Now, the Trent case, there's a lot of demolition going on in the half of Billington here, but I've been hearing demolition.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have, we have maybe two months away or three months away from. You know, it's not, it's around the corner, so to speak, and I'm sure we'll get another case. But I I I agree with you, Steve, if I may, uh, say one more thing. I I think we can, we should separate these. Uh, however, two things. One is, I think if Ron between now and the council meeting comes up with language on E and F. I think we should consider it, uh, for sure. And that would be my suggestion. And then two, I think that we can consider in the first, uh, set of changes, stormwater changes that are. You know, sort of tied to our lived experience with the approval process. Right? So what any, and Matt and Ron would have to educate us, or Robin has a better handle on that. What those are, I I will be more open to that. And then pull out those more substantive stormwater changes as a se- as a second amendment.
I appreciate the bucket approach, if it might help us kind of grasp some of those changes, Mr. Mayor.
But remember, so what you wanted to note is, are there pieces of this? Issue that you wish to move forward for introduction? On, at the government meeting or?
The first bucket, first, first bucket for me, I'm hundred percent comfortable. And I'm also confident Ron can come up with better language on E and F. You know, uh, I'm hundred percent comfortable on that. I think after that, I get. Less comfort and require us to either have more lived experience or more time discussing them because they're pretty substantial.
Well, you're, and that's what the council could discuss. Right. I mean, I did tell, I I'd say we do need to move quickly on applying our new stormwater criteria to renovations. Um, because otherwise, as I'm saying, they're gonna come in with everything being a renovation. Uh, to avoid the stormwater criteria.
Right.
We don't want that. So it's to look at what's written here. We can take out the maintenance responsibilities just now if people are uncomfortable with them. Um, and look at the language, which is short, on the renovations. And the only change I see that we need from. The current language of renovations, uh, is to simply add a reference to the. Tiering criteria that are applied for new, uh, we're applying to new construction. Um, and honestly, that is a very minor change. Um, but otherwise, in saying any renovation over a hundred fifty square feet applied to stormwater criteria too, that's, it's that simple, that's. Right. I think Kavir's comments is also about the whole tiered approach. If there's no, no living experience, maybe what I I could do is I could work with Ron. And I I was kind of trying to do that on my own as you were doing it and break them into kind of these three. Yeah, so we have the first category, which is, um. Basically just formalizing some procedures that are 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 already standard practice. And we've got another category, which is, we've got, we've kind of got these ideas based on at least this one property and maybe anticipating some other. And then we have a third category, which is, this is something new that we want and, for for example, the renovations. And I could, I could work with Ron to put them together as three different code amendments, kind of broke, broken up into that. Into those categories, if that, if that would be helpful.
Would be helpful for me, for sure.
Robin? If, if we were tonight to say, we're gonna, we want to put this as is on the agenda. To make the changes, but you probably, you, your committees are full then. Is that what you want?
Well, if that, I can't speak for the committee at the moment, but I'll, I'll try to voice what their concern is separately. Um, I am concerned that we don't delay adding renovations to the new constructions. For the reasons that I stated, we should move forward with that. And if we can get it onto the October agenda, I really recommend that we do that.
Or, right, remember everybody, it's on the agenda for introduction.
Right, and, right, yes, that, that's it. Now, that, that is just a little language in here, um. And. That we do it immediately, um, and we can't take more time over that, um.
But my question is, do you like it the way it is? You know, are you comfortable besides the renovation, you know, given that renovation here is past? Is this, is this all okay?
Uh, it. Yeah. Well, there are two, there are two things to say. Yeah, with the small tree that I talked about, which is to simply. Insert, use the tiering approach on the renovation language.
Ron has memories, by the way.
I'm, I'm happy with that, um.
Because I, I, I go, I'm into simplification of things and not making this so hard. And Robin, you've done a, I worked on this. You can tell me, this is the way to go. You know, I think we should go and not make that disaster.
Right. Well, Kavir has concerns, but why would you?
So what, so, uh, in the end, so Tom, what are the pieces of this item, this? Item number one, that, uh, you would like me. Me to put on the agenda for introduction in October? Because remember, councilor, then it goes through a whole process of notice and, and discussion and hearing and what have you. So, but we need to know so we can move, I think we need to move to the next item.
I just feel, I feel an urgency about.
So, so perhaps, uh, Councilor Barr can, uh, specify. Which parts, they, to the, and I think, uh.
Then it's ridiculous asking a question. Right. So let Ron ask his question, then we'll try and wrap this discussion up.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind the council that we still need a formula. For the renovation requirement, the capturing of the increase from runoff of new impervious surfaces. And, you know, it might be that we want to have.
Here, he can probably derive that, I, I think, um. I want a stormwater engineer to do it. Uh, I I could actually do a calculation myself, but I don't press my calculation. But I want to do a stormwater engineer to do it. Well, it is a simple calculation.
Okay, but, but we need a, we need that calculation, I think. Sort it out for the next week or so, so we can. Put it into the draft and.
Yeah, I think it, I think the problem needs to know what the specifics are, so they can comment.
Right. And also, we need that as a tool for when staff are talking to folks to come in, so they can do the calculation themselves. Anyway, the, the pieces that should go forward are. What Kavir talked about is the first category, which is the. Or which, the changes to, you know, formalizing the wall check and those other changes which Matt has recorded. The one exception to that. The one exception to that is the eliminating ENF from the criteria, which uh we do want to keep ENF in the criteria for the time being, so we can get back to language, that seems to be the decision tonight. Um, the other thing that I'm.
Oh, but Ron, sorry, why can't we give Ron a few days to give us better language then?
Well, that will be a third bucket. That will be considered completely separately from the other buckets, because the amount of discussion we get from the town on any teams here now could be long extraordinary. So I just want to keep that set.
And you, you are confident about that, that there will be a backlash?
I would call it backlash, I would call it backlash.
I would just call it uh necessary included comment from residents.
No, that's what I'm saying, if it's included, they will be able to comment. I'm just saying that we're talking about a formula for renovation that is seems pretty critical, that we have not come up with, that one man is going to come up with in one week's time, and we're willing to put that in. When we have sort of a body of experience and other town language, where our town lawyer could come up with language. I'm just trying to understand why one is okay to rush through, the other isn't.
Well, I mean, I think that the renovations, and I think the renovations are like long overdue. I mean, we need to add in like the renovation clause to the stormwater management.
We are talking about process, though. We're not talking about, listen, that's what, when Debbie said, hey, you know, let's just do it all at once. I think separating it out allows the town to engage with it. I'm not saying let's not put it out. Saying let's separate these tongue things so that town can engage with it.
Yeah, well, I mean, but.
Process question, not a substance.
You know, there's still like, I I think that, I think that the part about the um ah, the enjoyment of the neighbors and stuff, I mean, I think it is an important part and to figure out like, um you know, how we can keep that in with, you know, perhaps different language, but you know, what happens like? What happened, so I have a gigantic, huge, amazing tree in my backyard, canopy tree. And what happens if I saw my house tomorrow and the people want to come in and knock it down? And if we are, a- and they will follow all the rules exact, but we're the tree city. And um, you know, that will have an adverse effect on my neighbors because it provides shade for their houses because they're both brand new on other sides of me and they don't have any trees. And um, it, that tree provides a lot of um good usage. So how do we, how would we have protect our our town with that kind of situation if it weren't for adverse material impact?
Well, that's why we strengthened the tree code last year. A tree like that would, it would be extremely difficult.
So that's a great example, but it would be covered by other parts of the code.
Yeah, we we strengthened it for exactly those kinds of scenarios. So we got it out of the weakness, inter- open to interpretation, town manipulation, language that's vague, to something more specific grounded in science based on the P N R C committee. So that's the direction we should take our code in general.
Um, but from what I hear from you, Shannon, is strong support for the maintaining ENF as is or carefully considering new language that's still connecting to council to protect neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we had a great discussion going on this topic. Can I just say that the section that we should introduce in our October meeting is for A through C, not D, um, under uh other requirements, so D for A through C. Um, so, Ron, if you could provide some of those inputs to Matt. And Mayor and I will work with Matt, as Matt also works with our town attorney. So we can try to create these buckets on a very clear set of two or three um code updates. So, so we can easily knock out and agree on some, we might have more discussions with other people, some others. We might have to full concurrence on some, we might have split votes on others. That's all okay.
I'll just say, the the Stormwater Committee had other changes that they wanted to make, but I've, Steve has said, I have read, let's not do them.
It's, it'll be down. Down the road.
Right, there's a future work session.
Future work session, and at that point, we should have more experience to to inform decisions. Okay, great discussion, thank you. Um, next, next topic, we've got a lot of important, especially other topics, lowering the voting age to sixteen. Um, I was very impressed with the town format, I was so some major data, some games in world perspective. Um, and while I was, I must initially very hesitant to support this, I'm much more informed to lower the voting age. I'm going to point that I'd like to suggest here for around two thoughts. One, from procedural standpoint, is this type of a change something that should be voted on by the town? Is it proper and appropriate for us as council members to make? I don't necessarily have a position there, I was just thinking that it's such an interesting question, this is. And then the.
Ron, but I'm not sure that, I don't, it's just the town attorney, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily legally, that's, and that, I just mean more towards that.
But, well, I mean, I think, you know, I think we can, I think you can have like a non-binding. I think you're, you're muted, I think that the council could propose a non-binding referendum.
Why can't we have a binding referendum?
I I don't think, let's ask the town.
So it would require a charter amendment, and state law does dictate the process for a charter amendment, however, I don't think there'd be any, there'd definitely be no reason why you couldn't have a non-binding referendum.
Yeah, no, no.
I think you, you could probably do a binding as well, they, because although state law doesn't expressly provide for it, I don't think it would be prohibited.
I, I'm not suggesting that to 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 slow things down, I was just sort of wondering that, wondering what other council members thought. Um, the other question is, is the actual age starting at sixteen, or like, I've been thinking oh, might I'm over it to fifteen or fourteen, or
One two.
Or keep it at seventeen?
I don't think that the, I don't think any um in its values and jurisdictions, it's not one of those sixteen.
No, but I, my, um, my point is, my understanding is that the voting age was reduced to eighteen large part because that was the age at which people could serve in the military. And you want that people to serve in the military, be able to vote in their lives and why. So why are we lowering it to sixteen, or what's the connection of sixteen to some other point? It's my mind, and, oh, and if we do just do this as a council, I would like us to be unanimous, I would like us to come to consensus on this, I think it's such an important issue. I prefer not to split vote.
But we don't, but we don't, there's no, that's not how, that's not how.
No, it's not required, I'm just expressing myself on this forum, this is my wish list, this is my wish list. Um, and if it would help other people support this, I'd be happy with saying sixteen and a half, and that's because at sixteen and a half, that's when the state says you're old enough to be mature enough to drive a two thousand pound vehicle and cause serious damage if you're not mature enough, focused enough. So I think sixteen and a half is a more appropriate age to.
And and I think that, so, so remember tonight, the, the issue is whether you're going to uh put on the agenda the introduction of this.
Right, so we have heard it.
But, but I, I do think, I uh, that's a question asked this time attorney is, it it could be, Mr. Town Attorney, that we're lowering the voting age to sixteen and a half, correct?
Sure, yeah.
All right, sixteen and a half. No, it's up, no, it's, what I'm proposing is, I I think that there's I have, I have some reservations about lowering it all the way to sixteen. I think I'm very comfortable lowering it to sixteen and a half. And I'm just mentioning this, I'm not saying sticking that out as a solid position, and I will not vote for sixteen. But I'm very comfortable.
But like I say, the, tonight, the, the issue is whether you want to put it on the agenda as an introduction, it's not.
I, excellent point, and I am ready to put it on the agenda, not trying to hold things up. And I, I'd like to move ahead and I thought the form was excellent, yeah. Yeah, I'm excited about this. So let's go around the real virtual room again, probably. Yeah, uh, right, I am in support of um lowering the voting age to sixteen in town. Um. We have to frame it is, what will change if we do this? And the first thing to say is that we don't have many competitive elections in town. But not the law will change. Um, but if we do have a competitive election, um, sixteen and seventeen year olds are about two and a half percent of our total electorate. So uh, they're not going to make a big difference to the outcomes. So, one, there'll be very little effect because we don't have competitive elections very often. Second, there'll be very little effect because they're only a small percentage of electorate. Okay, so the other kind of effect is only individual sixteen year olds, and that's where the forum was very helpful. Because what we learned is that when sixteen year olds get a vote, first of all, they vote in greater percentages than older people do in that election. And that seems to be sustained over time, that is, that they are more regular voters. So by bringing it down to sixteen, we are actually helping people to vote in the future as well. And they explained that on the forum as well, they said, well, you're basically teaching them as parents how to vote when they're sixteen because they're still in the home, so they learn that as a value and that they carry with them when they leave the home. The problem with eighteen is for a lot of kids, they're in college at that time, and it's a mess as to where they register, what they do, and people, they just drop it, go extra, and that's all, and that was also. Yeah, okay. So that's in favor of introducing the amendment. Kabir?
Uh, like you, Steve and Robin, I'm also in favor of introducing the amendment and uh it'd be great to get get, you know, a more sort of broader, deeper conversation going with the town. As we all know, introduction does not equate adoption. And so, you know, let's see how this sort of further raises the bar. I thought the forum was really, really good uh in in providing data from three towns. Um, neighboring towns in sort of addressing a lot of the specific questions raised by many residents and their concerns around this, and so that was really helpful. Again, you know, grounded in data and and lived experience is always beneficial. Um, I'm definitely in favor of introducing it and and looking forward to the discussions.
Okay, great, and Shannon?
Um, I'm also in favor of introducing it and um you know, I think that we've heard some neighbors um send some notes about how um you know, they don't necessarily want um a young person who isn't a property owner or um, you know, they don't want them voting for the budget and things like that. Um, I think that they make some good points. But I also, you know, think that, you know, to Robin's point, that it's really actually not that many people. Um, I think that getting them started early um for voting is going to be um really, I mean, is great for our entire country. Um, and so if we can start with that here, then great. I mean, it would be cool to also have, like, maybe if someone wanted to do like a a youth article in the town journal, or, you know, kind of have like a government group of of some of these um youth kids like in the neighborhood to see what's important to them. I mean, that would be a great, um I think that would be helpful for our community.
Right, and great idea, I wish Shannon could.
That's what I mean, um, I am, I'm fine with bringing this forward, okay, as a short answer. I would hate to pass the sixteen year old vote because they don't really make a difference. You know, basically, I didn't mean it like that much, Robin, it was, you know, it's in a callous way, but it I would just hate to pass it based on that, okay? I think that um, I watched, unfortunately, I couldn't watch it, you know, in real time. And I was disappointed when I did watch it, that I didn't see much of our own youth in there besides Don Smith. Maybe there was more, and I don't know, but I found that to be really disappointing. Where were, where were our youth in 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 this conversation? Um, I would, I, you know, I'm done, you know, I've been out there before, maybe you all know, I I don't agree with this. I would love to see a Sunday youth council, I'd like to bring civic engagement to Somerset. And if we really get that civic engagement here from these kids and then give them a vote, if that's what makes sense, but I'm not sure, I still I I I I still don't believe that this some, this makes sense. So, but let's bring it forward, let's have a conversation. I've heard from, from several residents that are not happy with this. You know, but um, it'd be interesting, but the other thing is, is that I really believe that this should be a referendum from the town. I don't think we should make this decision, I think it's a big decision. I think we should hear, we should have a binding referendum if that's legally possible, and let the town vote. And if the town wants this, then go for it, you know, just because I don't agree with it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. So, that's, that my plea would be to have a, have a referendum, let's bring it forward.
Right. And call that discussion.
So I think the only issue is, do you, are you, did you want to bring it forward as lowering the voting age to sixteen or sixteen?
To sixteen. We can discuss other options or variations, but as proposed, this is. And that application. Fortunately, gas power leak lower ban. But this, this is a topic that I I think we, the council, discussed and sort of pushed into the future a little bit. Uh, you know, how would we handle those cases of non-compliance with the jet? And I know today, um, especially since in the current situation, we do not have a compliance officer for the town. So it makes it difficult to take action. And I know that on our corner, Kabir and I noticed a two in the house that I think uh is maybe a sa- a safe house. Um, Matt, although nobody was there, they're, they're just using gas power leak flowing the other day. I took some pictures of them to Matt. But the the vendor, the contractor had no sign on the vehicle, no, no, no license number, no phone number. So I don't know how we're going to know.
Well, let's have the town attorney talk about the different uh issues here. And, you know, one of them is, you know, I think it's fine, because I discussed this with Matt about a little bit a hundred. But when, and and Ron can verify this, but if someone is using a gas powered leak lower, it's, it's banned, it's not the, the guilty party is the person using it, not that owner. Ten, is that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
So the, the town has the option of well, let me, let me back up. Typically, and I think this is how Matt is proceeding, the first step is education, give people a warning. I believe Matt's been handing out flyers with the new laws. If it came to the situation where you wanted to issue a fine, the way to do that is to have a citation drawn up served by a code enforcement officer who either witnesses the violation or has an affidavit from someone who has witnessed the violation, who's willing to be a witness in court. After citation is issued, the alleged violator has the option of paying the fine or contesting the citation in court. So that, that's why the witness requirement is there.
Ron, can the witness, the town manager or a council member? Doesn't have to be a enforcement officer, right? That is the trigger for the citation.
Correct, it, it, it has to be someone who the town has designated to serve that role. Could be a council member, could be. Could be a council member, could be manager. The town has the option of issuing the citation to the person holding the leaf blower or the lot owner. Because there is a presumption that the lot owner allowed the violation.
Ron, Ron, um, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to ask you this um, beforehand, so I apologize. Catch you off guard, but the county for its noise ordinance has a two-party reporting system. Are those people considered witnesses? So if the county were issued, if the county issued a, a fine for uh. Breaking the noise ordinance, are those people that, the two neighbors that signed the the two-party? Uh, reporting, are they, would they be called as witnesses in court?
Yes, yes, so thanks, Matt. That is another option for the town as well. You can refer complaining parties to the county Department of Environmental Protection. Which has on its website, a process for submitting a complaint known as the, the two-party complaint form that Matt mentioned. And I believe when you fill out that form, that you're signing it under oath. And with the promise to be available for court proceedings. I'll look right now to make sure that's right.
Let me add something else, which is, we also should explore how the, how Chippewa Chase Village is enforcing this. And also how the district. Is enforcing this. And let me just point out that this is something you injected and I just to let the council know. Um, get, get an update, but it's really up to the town manager to uh, enforce, you know. oversee the enforcement instead.
This entire history, uh, district is not using its police officers, it's using citizen report of incidents of. Gas powered blowers being used, um, Chippewa Chase Village is using its police officers. So it's different to a neighborhood.
So I, so I think the best thing is just, you know, uh, the town manager wrote a beautiful uh, report and. And everyone's hearing input from the town attorney, but I don't think we need to spend a lot of time. But I, but I do think it would be good to, for uh, the the staff to pursue. Um, these, the comments that councilor Moore made so that we can get further verification of that. And perhaps the staff will propose some kind of. Regulation to be uh, approved by the county.
There will, one other point of information is that the initial hearing on the county's. Proposed ban on gas powered leaf blowers is tomorrow. Correct, Mr.?
I wanted to say that, um, I I I genuinely believe that this ban will be adhered to. I think on the whole, it is being adhered to. I think Steve, part of the reason you made that observation is that it's a broader problem. There are two homes here that are unoccupied. And homeowners don't live on property. So they are not up and up with everything that's going on in the town. And are unable to then guide their contractors and vendors. And so I just, I think that's largely the kinds of things we are going to see. I think on the whole, it appears to be being enforced because this has been in effect for a while. It's been happening all over the country. I think we are gonna see it being adhered to. That doesn't mean, don't need stronger code enforcement. That's not what I'm saying, but I just want to say in this specific instance. I think we're gonna be, you know, pleased with how it's adhered to over time. This specific instance is a broader issue that we have homes that are not occupied. And so the homeowners are not plugged into the happenings of the town.
Right.
Exactly, okay, so, so I'd like Councilor Moore brought this up about the county. Because first of all, we should all be writing to the county council in support of legislation. And secondly, we can also acquire what are the county's plans to enforce it? Because if this does pass, this is to uh, that's. Who more is point? If, if the county passes this, then we'll be able to ask the county to enforce it. Right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So let's all be advocates for that individually.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, by the way, we do a year of education ourselves, um, so that we just give them the flyers and tell them, you know, there's a ban. And the fact, and point is that by that year, the county should have passed. So it's good.
But it's already had a positive effect, neighborhood is much quieter.
It is, yes.
Okay, so congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to us, thank you. Next topic, driveways and aprons.
Well, this was just something that I had sort of flagged. I don't know that it's necessarily urgent, so if, if, if in the interest of time, you, you wanted to move off of this one. Um, I I I was just pointing out that our code is sort of unique in that we only regulate the driveway aprons. As opposed to the driveways. And so, um, yeah, this, this could tie into stormwater things down the line. Um, and it's, um, it's all sorted. A lot of neighboring municipalities, you know, they, they require a permit and uh, review for driveways themselves. We only do in the context of building permit. Um, so I, I, I was just sort of pointing that out. I was, I was sort of thinking about it in the context of the, the roadway master plan.
Yeah, and may I suggest that, Mr. President, there we put this, if there's time, put this at the end. Because I wanted to add some historical information to this. And so if we get there, if not, we can have a next one.
And we'll try to reach back to it. Board of Supervisors on Elections Charter Amendment Resolutions, everyone should receive the uh, the zip file.
Yeah, this. Five or six, I think six different. Uh, altogether, I think. One of them is just a resolution which updates the um. Updates the election rules and regulations. Then there's a handful of actual charter amendments. Most of them, and actually, we are joined by the uh, Chair of Board of Supervisors of Elections, so. Um. So the scheme chair might be able to explain it even better than I.
Yeah, she might want to, I just briefly. Because again, the only issue tonight is whether you're gonna put this on the agenda. And perhaps Chair Vivintin Khan can briefly describe this package, which I know was worked on very hard also by her town attorney.
Sure, yeah, I'm, that, um, Ron can definitely um, explain it also. But I can just say sort of in a nutshell that um, over the past two years now. When we have faced um, uh, emergency measures because of the pandemic. It also pointed out some areas where um, our own code was a little bit outdated. Um, and so if we want to go through each one and, you know, this is. Um, this is the product of many discussions among us, you know, they've been open meetings. But um, it's mostly been the committee that's been in attendance. Um, and some conversations with the county um, elections chairs. And so we've done a lot of background work, which is why it took us so long to, to get to this point. But we always had the intention of proposing some charter changes. Um, so if we start with um, Resolution three dash twenty-two, which is um. Proposing to amend section eighty-three twenty-one of the code. Um, that is mostly to define what reside means. And that question's come up many, many times from um, voters and residents. Um, and so we tried to, we tried to um, codify it here. Um, I believe, and Ron can correct me. I believe that in some of our emergency legislation over the past couple of years. We actually did include this definition. It might have been in the regulations, um, but I don't think this will be new to anyone. But happy to answer anyone's questions about this.
Yeah, that definition is in the election rules. So this charter amendment would codify what's currently in the rules.
I would call it students be um. Fifth and right period.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble he- hearing from that room.
Students. Fifth and right period. College students.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
How about students, the, the question?
Students, students, is that what you're asking about, students? Yeah, um, this definition um, would include students who are not voting in another jurisdiction. So, you know, we always have the issue of college students. They seem to have an option um, to vote in the um, state where they're going to college. Um, or just maintaining their residence here. Because temporary absences, you know, there's a difference between residence and domicile. And your domicile is the home to which you intend to come back after. A temporary absence for whatever reason. In, i- it could be a placement overseas. It could be going away to college. Um, but if you vote, basically, the, the important standard is that if you're voting somewhere else, you can't vote in Somerset also. If you're voting in another jurisdiction, unless the jurisdiction is outside of the United States. Because as you know, we have some residents who are not citizens. They vote in the country where they are citizens. Um, but we still, under our policies and uh, the provisions of our charter. Um, we still in, let them vote in the Somerset elections. So that would be the only exception of voting somewhere else. But if you vote anywhere else in the United States, then you cannot vote in Somerset.
I'm sorry, somewhere else or what type of elections?
A- and really any type of election because it's too hard to distinguish if you're voting in another state.
But they wouldn't be, they would vote.
Then you're declaring that you're.
Another state, but they could vote for council in this, in this town. Those are two different elections.
Yeah, I mean, you, that is up to the council. If you want to make, that's not what we're recommending. But if you want to create a different set of standards for what it takes to be a resident in the town of Somerset. Um, you, you could do that, that's not what we're recommending because, um.
But you're recommending, what are you recommending is not really apples to apple. You're saying they voted another election, but it's not the same election. So why does it matter?
Just let me point out that this proposed charter amendment would codify existing practice. Right now, the election rules do provide the same definition for residents. And the rules say temporarily absent residents who deem the town to be their single domicile for voting purposes are entitled to vote. Including but not limited to college students, travelers on vacation, property owners temporarily residing in a seasonal or second home. Those serving in the military and persons receiving medical or hospice care. However, we do say that residence refers to one's permanent abode and single domicile for voting purposes. Because it's generally understood that anywhere in the, in the United States. You have to basically designate a, a single residence for voting purposes. Because you're not allowed to vote in two different states. But we don't care, let's say, if there's a citizen of another country residing in the town. Who's voting in their home country of France or wherever. But you can't vote in two different states in the US, if that makes sense.
That's helpful.
Thank you, Ron. You said it better than I did, thank you.
If that, in the interest of time, unless anyone has any questions or if you're in agreement to introduce this. Yeah, at the October meeting.
Yes.
Put it on the agenda for possible introduction.
That's it, thank you.
Open on the agenda for a possible introduction.
And then in the meantime, if anyone has specific questions about it.
This one or all five?
All of them, we've been all.
Oh, okay.
So we don't, we don't need to go through all the details.
But, but should anyone have questions, please contact the town manager, I mean. Because I, I follow the subject.
I think all of these changes make a lot of sense, just procedurally making the running of elections easier.
But I, but I do want to congratulate the board and the chair and the town attorney. For really scrubbing through uh, a, a totally outdated charter. Uh, and in moving it forward so we can really come into the twentieth century.
So Mr. Mayor, it might help to make two quick points. Most of these are all cleanups, but there are two that, you know, are potentially worth discussion. And that is, one would empower the Board of Supervisors to decide the manner of elections. So that would empower the board going forward to decide whether we're gonna have, let's say, a mail-in only election. If, in case of there's another emergency or, you know, other reason to do so. Right now, we can only have a mail-in election if the governor declares a state of emergency. And secondly, the Sixth Amendment would allow the board to cancel an uncontested election. So that we can save the burden and expense of having an election. But folks have raised different thoughts.
So we will make sure that once it's introduced, that the, that the, that the publicity, particularly in the journal. Highlights the areas where there will be the most interest for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, one, one thing we did want to point out though is the timing of all of this, just so the council is aware. Um, Ron, I wrote it down, so, okay, so, um, the timing is that, um. If the council will consider this at the meeting on October third. Um, and then, um, you know, give residents notice and whatever. And then uh, vote on it and adopt whatever provisions the council chooses to on November seven. Then it has to be published and thi- this is, this is how charter amendments, and maybe you know this, but I just wanted to tell you the timeline here. So. So it would be, so these proposals or any proposals would be effective December twenty-seven. And that would give us time then to implement them in the upcoming, you know, in the twenty twenty-three election. Um, so we're on, you know, a little bit of a, you know, of a, of a, not, not time crunch. We think this gives us a comfortable amount of time to put any changes into effect. If we can't, we can't, we'll operate as we have the past couple of years, but just wanted to point out that timing.
Thank you for that.
Very much.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to other special projects. Thank you for the way you bucked into the discussions, Pat. Pool repairs and options moving forward.
Steve, I, I had mentioned as you were biking over that I unfortunately had a hard, early hard start. So I'm gonna drop off and I'll catch up with, with the mayor tomorrow.
So guys are. Who are, thank you for being here and we, Matt and I will brief you.
Thank you.
What happens in the next twenty minutes, but I don't think it will be, I, I don't think it will be.
The truth is, most of them are just u- updates at this point anyway, so I'm happy.
I went through the materials, but I, I will, I will circle back, thank you all.
Thank you for joining us, Kabir, um, pool repairs.
So, oh, so, so just in a nut- in a nutshell, basically, um. I was trying, I'm trying to get a sense of what kind of maybe phasing we could do so that we can be responsible about budgeting it, um. I'm, I'm working on an RFP right now to do just a thorough evaluation pool, all of the different aspects of this. So we can get uh, real bids from multiple companies. And, and, you know, then we're gonna make a true comparison of those. And I think at this point, realistically, we won't get to the major construction work probably until next, a, a year from now. Um, just the way that it's all sort of interconnected. One of the things I was maybe twining with is getting a bid to see, you know, if we could operate some of the, the chairs on the pool deck. Since they're kind of looking at the pool. Um, but otherwise, just kind of save, saving the money. Hopefully, by the time the spray rolls around, we'll have a better sense of.
Park, park the money and add more next year, then we might be able to afford it.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, that's exactly what I was thinking, even if we got a bid on chairs and spent, you know, even if it was a couple thousand bucks or something. And then just transfer the other money into one of our accounts that gives a little bit more interest, um, you know, you know.
We don't, we don't, we're not in jeopardy of not testing it on inspection with any of this, are we?
No, there's a couple of things that were grandfathered in, but we've, we've, that's been the case for several years.
All right, of course, we do not in jeopardy.
Yeah, no, no, nothing, nothing like that.
I have some objection to your. I have some objection to your replacing chairs, replacing chairs, you know, that.
Okay.
Yeah, we always used to have a like a rotation.
We we do, but they're, I think they're just so old that even just power washing them and restrapping them, they're just.
Do you mean instead of system, we have a hundred chairs, we have, we place twenty of them every year, so we understand that.
I think we were basically doing every three years, we would do a major recleaning and restrapping of them, but yeah, it might make more sense to just figure every ten years, every replace.
I'm glad to hear that you're going now for the thorough, more expensive evaluations of the pool because this essentially huge effort we're talking about, it's lots and lots of details. You need to understand exactly what's happening and to assess what the priorities are, what our priorities are based on what the conditions in the cross.
Yeah, it's it's, I mean, it's a long, it's a decision that has long-term impact too, so. Want to do it right, I guess.
Oh. Okay. I can update the the beginning.
So I I were ready to introduce.
Something October.
Yeah, and Chair, uh, this, I was with us as well. Barton, Barton and I worked together to kind of update the the proposal based on the feedback instead of it in a formal bid for, you know, a firm to do the work to just get a volunteer and offer a small site that you cover cost and all that. And so I think we're we're ready to move to the head.
That's fair. I I just think we ought to be able to do a site that's kind of like you received a site, right? You don't have to have a personal liability, insurance coverage, and then corporate company.
Well, I think I just consider it so. Because they take their taxes.
Yeah, that's true.
And and I think technically I'd consider it full-time, probably a new charter. You get health insurance.
No, but I mean, I I probably could.
Yeah, you, most of the interesting side topic, but might you know what, health health insurance won't do these days with bankrupt town.
But but you get lost in health insurance.
Yeah, and and you, I think you would be eligible for it because every year, we do the insurance through Montgomery County. And we have to submit a list of other employees every year.
Yeah, so when my, when my this is, I mean, they probably should be looked at in the future for future mayors, but I'm sure this when it was all created, it wasn't done in the state that we are. So.
If it was, I'd be surprised.
Right.
So.
Okay, um, I'll make sure that's in place.
Halloween. Uh, what are the plans for this year's Halloween?
I think the last couple of years, we had a group of volunteers that led the effort. I think. And yeah, they, yeah, exactly. So I think the only thing would be if if we feel like it's been a good good event the last couple of years is to just consider adding it to the agenda to close the street for a couple hours that that night. And and then I was just letting you into that thing in the past, we got an extra police officer to make sure the entrances are safe and you can allow them, so.
Just like with with the with the regs, I think the council has to ask residents proposing this street.
Yeah, that's what that's what we've done in the past, yeah.
So the whole issue was probably about changing the agenda.
Yes.
Which I can actually figure out.
Okay, good. Seven fifteen, before we talk one of the other topics, some of the legislation has, you know, we're talking about July.
Well, well, well.
Do you mind if I jump back here?
Well, let me give an, I can quickly, I can so it's it's seven fifteen and I can do an update and we'll be out of here hopefully in seven. So the Norman Dog Park issue, which is actually the Willard Avenue Dog Park issue.
Right, yes.
Okay, so I've said, I've said this area all over the last few weeks to all of you about what's been happening, but just to refresh your memory, put it on the record. So remember, there was a proposal to put a dog park in Norway. And because of opposition by neighbors, that was shelved. And so then, Councilmember Freetson, the planning board chair, and our former town attorney, Norman Kana, came up with this idea to possibly put a dog park and and Willard Avenue Park, which you all familiar with. And in order to have the planning department design such a park and to determine the placement, it was it was necessary to move some money around in the budget. So we were asked, I believe in March, to pass a resolution supporting this move on budget lines to another so that funds could be used to come up with. And at the time, former council member president, excuse me, Shaw had acquired that, you know, with this on me. And she, because she wanted to ensure that that before we took a position on this potential park, that there would be impact, but from our residents, especially all those along Upper Hill Street who would be adjoining to the park. And and so when I sent the letter from the council to the authorities, I made it clear that we were supporting and you you all saw this, right? That we were that we were supporting moving the budget, that we reserve the right to comment, right? So somehow this got misinterpreted to the Parks Department that the Somerset Town Council, the town was supporting this. And 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 then we also requested that there, once the information about this proposal was was announced, that that we would be able to notice our our town, especially the adjoining residents, about this year. And we heard about it secondhand, and so we struggled to get to get get it out. I don't think very many of our residents attended this that year, right? But that it was, and so now, and so now, we are being urged by by the coordinating committee and others to support this park, but I don't think the council really wants to do that until we find out where our residents. So will you, what you're trying to get.
Yeah, the only update from what I what I wrote here is that the the woman Rachel Newhouse, who's the project manager for it with Montgomery County, she sent me a couple of dates in November that we could do a meeting about it, so.
So it's, so they're not on the verge of making a decision?
No, she said there, it's not going to go to the planning board until at least February.
Okay, excellent. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so so this is to inform, is to inform you, and we'll start publicizing once we get a date that we will be having our own here so that residents can ask questions. And that's, it's a great update. Thank you. The the Thrive of Garden twenty fifty, the the update about that is, you know, the county executive has announced that he is opposed to this current council voting on Thrive twenty fifty during this named act term. So I think we I I don't know if we want to grip this the agenda for us to support that. I mean, I personally support that position. But the issue is not I don't want to put that on the agenda for the the council. And and that is sincerely a science.
I think, yes, I think the more people, I think if we should, I think we should support it without, you know, you know, owning everybody to see what they think. But if if we, I think we should discuss it, and then I would be persuaded, turn persuaded to support, you know, not, you know, on.
Since supporting the county executive's position. So 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 if you're all in favor of putting it on the agenda, I think we want to make sure that we publicize this, the county executive's position so that people could comment.
Yeah, he, yes, I mean, he is addressed on, whenever it was, it was supposed to be. The address, and it's on the website. Goes into detail of why he is insisting that the council delay it, maybe to do affordable housing.
Right, should be put a link to it in the town journal, when people haven't seen it. Now, I know it comes right to my inbox, I mean, but I.
Well, there's Tyler to do that. Why? Yeah. And maybe we should throw together, we can probably throw together. Well, we could, well.
Don't tell.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't.
We can wait, maybe if you don't have a position for it.
We'll put it out. Okay, and the last thing before we go is so there there's another bad zoning text amendment on the, this and I think Councilor Barnes, who I met this, about the the attendance. And our ad hoc, our ad hoc Chair Suzanne, I couldn't prepare a testimony, and I I had there was a hearing last week, which I think we sent. Didn't we send that to her? So the only issue about this is we want to put this on the agenda for the council, considering taking the position. Did you, Councilor Moore, you have?
There's some, there's a considerable sensitivity in town to by the small cells are being put up in the town. And so it makes some sense that we put it on the agenda for input from the town.
Because maybe you want to support it. I I would support it. Maybe the council wants to support it.
Yeah, right, and then there's Crow's and Collins office. So we should just get it worked through on the town, so we'll know where we are.
Maybe next you go to the pros and the cons.
Do we know if there are going to be any new bill permits?
Yeah, two.
Uh, this month? Yes.
Our one.
Very similar to the last one.
So so. Okay, that's all I have to say with my Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your. And any last questions, comments, Jim? Thank you. I think this was an excellent meeting, Mr. President, and I think we we move forward on some important topics.
Slowly, but sure.
Thank you.
So you, did you not just scroll down the text?
Or did you find that text?